They get staffed on over three years. They want to show new employees.
Mmm.
No, I'd...
As I talked about, we have to keep talking about doing so.
Okay, so we're on the same page.
Kind of what I thought I would, you know, even if we don't get to talk about it anymore.
You can handle it.
Yeah. All right, you have them.
All set? Question?
We have a agenda.
Agenda?
Yes, I need an agenda. Thank you.
I want to work for our administration when we had a $16 million deficit that it was facing. And we decided that we no longer had any problems. We only had opportunities for this.
Thanks, Jeff.
We did. Okay? We didn't have any problems. We had our...
Couple minutes. Okay.
That is correct.
Do we have... Okay. Yeah. Okay. These are three hole punch, so I'm going to leave them over here.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
This is what, um, goes back to this, which we, um, spread. I brought more copies than...
It's trying to be someplace...
There we go. Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 15th Budget Review Subcommittee. And we were going to pick up our agenda from, I believe we have a quorum.
Yes.
Yep. We're going to pick up our agenda from last Friday and talk about fiscal business relating to free cash. And I also have a talk with Superintendent Rabinovich, a update on what I would call the highlights, the budget highlights for fiscal 2012 as they relate to personnel. And I have a report to give out to the committee when we get to that juncture. But with that, following Jeff's lead from last time, I don't know if we got to see the minutes yet from Susan Green, but we'll get them out.
I haven't seen them.
Okay. We'll get them out as quickly as we can. I didn't know if I missed something myself, but at this juncture, why don't we get into a discussion of free cash? If anybody has any questions or clarifications we can make on it. I'll just set, if I can, the tone from town administrator's standpoint that we had talked about our free cash as it was certified and the outstanding liabilities that the town has with respect to our collective bargaining agreements and certain other items that needed to be addressed, including snow and ice and some issues from prior years. And I have to say to you that this is a, as I said last time, a snapshot in time. It doesn't tell you where we're going to wind up. It gives you a snapshot in time. And as we said last time, that we would give regular updates not only to the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Finance Committee, whoever would want one. But this is what we're looking at right now in terms of dollars set aside for certain values that we know that have been put in place and/or voted at town meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions or however you'd like to move forward is fine by me.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Um, most of it was very clear and I understood. I was a little confused about the FY09 deficit. Is that a snow and ice deficit or just an '09 deficit?
That is departmental deficits that came during the close of FY09, which was completed right before town meeting last year. So those were the deficits the town had to carry on there. It should have theoretically and would have been in the tax rate, but being new, getting everything done, it was April before that was completed.
All right. I was just, because normally my thinking wasn't in setting the tax rate, but we, you know, like I understood one year, you know, you have deficits from 11 when we're talking 12, but...
Correct.
I was just confused.
And due to the timing, it has to, that is the FY09.
Okay. So it isn't just snow and ice?
No, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, I have a question. It's wonderful that we have $1,753,000.
Yes, Rick.
Where do you come from? Because I think it's important to try to understand...
It's a good point. It's a really good point.
And how this develops and what level we might develop in 2012 or this week.
Sure. Sure. It's a very good question, and I think for all of our understanding and identification of where it comes from is a very, very, very valid point. We started the year off with a budget, proposed budget that had been in fiscal 2009 before I got here. Went through town meeting, went through the entire process of appropriation. The same thing happened in fiscal 2010 in each of those years. And actually, the lion's share is from last year, and it's from tax title. So we aggressively went after back taxes. We were getting to a point where I believe, and the town accountant will correct me, as she usually does, with respect to about $850,000 of back taxes collected and another 150 or so in penalties and interest earned on that. And it can become rather progressive. We also had, we have a tax, I guess a tax attorney that works at the treasurer's collector's office to aggressively go after these. We don't want to be in the property business. We just want to collect what is due to us. And that makes up just about a million dollars of the $1,753 that we have in free cash, if you will, free cash position. Throw into that, the town had a planning position. I'll use that as an example because it's on my worksheet. We either didn't fill it or couldn't find anybody to fill it. And it was, it's a fairly decent salary, but we budgeted for it. So at the end of the fiscal year, those budgeted dollars were sitting and were not used. And the same would hold true for just about any other position that we had or planned expenses. We'd like to think if you had a decent snow, I should say a decent, if you had a very, rather temperate snow season, that you might have some money left over in your snow and ice account. So any unused portions of dollars that are set aside in accounts would, once again, theoretically make up free cash in the end.
Okay. Could we get a detailed breakout of this $1,753? Is that fine? Could we do that, please? Because that would be very, very helpful. Again, I think it points out all the issues and also I think it gives us some guidance because we work through the budgeting process.
Sure.
If nothing else, when we go through the department heads.
Sure.
All right? So that all those that are in attendance, we'll understand that as well.
Absolutely.
And it doesn't really apply to the school, bringing so much education. That would be very helpful.
Sure. Madam McAlton, did you want to say something?
Yes, please. On the certified value...
Hey, here's your microphone.
Thank you.
You get yours and we get ours.
Okay. On the certified value...
I can get it back over to you, Tom.
Certified value also includes carryforward from prior fiscal year. We had $715,000 that was approved as free cash for FY09. Out of that, we used $225,300 for budgeting purposes in FY10. So what we didn't use, which is $490,000, rolled into the current fiscal year. So if you take the million dollars on the tax approximately that came in, and then you have approximately $500,000 through the rollover, that leaves about $253,000. But one of the major things that has to be considered when calculating free cash is not just the amount of money left over in a budget. The town currently has 163 funds or 163 checkbooks. Every single piece of activity in those checkbooks affects the free cash. So let's say grant funding, and I'm only using the school, for example, because they're here. This is hypothetical. We have grants that are outstanding where they're reimbursable grants. If we get the money in within a certain amount of time, say the 60 days or 90 days, we don't have to carry that burden for the grant that may be in deficit, but not really because we know we're getting reimbursed. If that money doesn't come in by the time the DOR allows, we have to carry what's called a deficit on that, although it's not true deficit. It comes off our calculations of free cash. So out of all these funds, every single fund has to come into play. And additionally, what also comes into play on this is any tax outstanding. Real estate tax outstanding, what we get is a reduction to our calculated free cash. And then the following year, that money will go back in, but it's taken back out again each year with your real estate taxes, et cetera. So the calculation, it's pretty much a 10-page process to get to these figures. Everything a fund gets taken into our account. The DOR will look at it, and then the DOR makes the decision as to what our calculated free cash is. I could come out and say as the town accountant, oh, I think we're going to have $2 million. What I say doesn't mean anything. It's down to the final reporting of the DOR.
No, I understand that. And Mr. Chairman, the other thing...
Sure.
Anything that we did look at as far as where it came from would deal only with material amounts.
We have to look at...
Yes.
It's a material amount.
Yeah.
I'm not looking for a thousand a year, a couple thousand a year.
No, no.
I'm looking for the big, you know, maybe it's unfilled positions, $50,000. So we have a general idea, which you basically informed me tonight, which you hadn't known before, was, you know, by half a million dollars, and this is the rollover from the prior year.
Right.
And looking here, there's not going to be any rollover from this year going into 2012. The million dollars that was collected was collected from very old tax accounts. That's not going to be, some will be available, but nowhere near that amount.
You are correct.
Right? And those are the things that are really important to me at this point.
Because...
I don't want anybody to think that free cash is going to be the solution to our problem, because it's not going to be. I think to everybody at this table knows, but I think the public needs to know it as well.
Right. And I think the other key point is that it's not free, meaning you can see on the bottom portion, there are liabilities that we need to satisfy, whether we like it or not, in order for the Department of Revenue, as Biz stated, to set the tax rate for us, because that's the, that's one of the key ingredients for it. But I think, I think this has brought a stronger working relationship to understand what we're trying to accomplish and that, you know, the, each and each of these items that will be worked on, we'll work hard to get better on. But one of the items that I mentioned, and if you know the unemployment side of it, we have a number in a line. It's almost like snow and ice. And we're holding that number because we're giving our best budgeted estimate, and then some other body, whether it be Congress or the state legislature, takes an action and they change that. And so that goes, there's an extra added amount that we need to put in there, which we'll be bringing forward this spring. But the point of it is, is that I'm happy to say that I believe I read and also heard on the radio that we now have a frozen unemployment line. So we're not going to be charged anymore this next season, if you will, going into it, that the unemployment insurance has been frozen. So, and I'll do some more research on that, but I just heard that this weekend. So that's going to help us. And you can see other things that are on here, you know, once again, some of them, you know, can be, can be satisfied by a very, you know, getting better with some of our estimates and also holding department heads' feet to the fire as it relates to what they're doing with appropriations. And that's what we've been doing basically over the past year's time to make sure that they understand as leadership team members, and the superintendent has heard me speak about this because Dr. Rabinovich and/or others attend my meetings, that we're holding people responsible for the lines that they control. And that's, that's really what this amounts to in some point. Snow and ice is a little bit different. I did make a commitment this year that, I'm not sure there's a formula for this. If you can do it by the inch or you can do it by, you know, insurance or some other method, there's been all kinds of talk. All I know is that when I get out in the snow fighter and see a clean street, you can basically sleep that night knowing that we've done the best we can. Not only that night to get people back home from their work, but also to get schoolchildren to school the next day. And I think we've had a remarkable record thus far, Mr. Superintendent.
That's correct.
Making sure that we're on target with that. So that lines, you know, might be a little bit more this year, but you know what? I'm not sure you can put a price on making sure that the streets are safe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Sorry. Just to go along with that, with snow and ice, you had said as two meetings ago that the governor is planning on reimbursing towns for snow and ice.
Yes.
What was the percentage that you said? Was it 75% or what?
I don't know, but in years past, when I've worked there, and he did file a $25 million appropriation, we'll get the tracking for you, let you know where that is. I'm sure it's in the House Ways and Means Committee. I'll say that, say it that way. And in years past, it has been between 50 and 75 cents on a dollar of what your projected shortfall might be. And so that being said, it just brought enlightenment that state government is watching carefully. I think they know that we're, you know, in a painful position, not only in fiscal 2011 we're on it, but going forward into 2012. And this, this will be carried as a line because we're going to be over the $175,000 with the appropriation. So I don't know the exact formula yet, but I do know that in years past, it has been based on the number of miles of roadways that you have and how much you actually physically have as a shortfall. So I can keep this body aware of what that might be. Okay? You're welcome. Yes, Jeff?
Two things. The $278,000 and change that the schools returned to the town, will that show up in this coming year's free cash or is that part of the 1.7539?
Yes, did you want...
As far as the funding return from the school department, as Dr. Rabinovich and Anna and I have spoken in the past regarding monies that came from FY09, is pretty much where that is. Because when you close your books, as we know, there's been an issue with VEDAR that accounts weren't linked. The school department during previous years has been having what's called a prior year carryforward, which they're allowed to do by law. What happened in the past is that prior year carryforward was never linked to the town books. There was no record of any activity prior year carryforward. And part of the grants issue when the health insurance trust first came about, the prior town accountant was taking those grants and applying them to what showed on the town's book as a deficit for the school department and not applying it to the health insurance trust as he was required to do. So what we're doing going forward is the links, and I've already spoken with, with the business director, Anna Miranda, regarding links to make sure that the school's link number is now affiliated with the town. So there'll be a carryforward number for the town so that when the school closes their books, their balance that they record is automatically linked to the town books. That's why it's very, very important to make sure that every single fund, every single account and every single department balances to the town book, because the town book is the official record. So...
I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying. I'm just saying that as of June 30th, 2010...
It does not show up. And the reason that it doesn't show up is that you, on the town side of the book, is that FY09, you had free cash, I think it was, you had $298,000, Dr. Rabinovich, I think, at the end of FY09?
Yeah, but FY10 is what we're talking about.
Right.
And at the end of 10, we didn't bring anything forward.
Correct.
And at the end of the year, there were $278,000 left in the accounts that we wrote a memo that we said we were returning to the town. So I guess the question is where, what happened to that money? And what I'm hearing is that in the whole, we're looking at all of the funds in the town and saying that the link wasn't set up...
Correct.
That it...
Accounting nightmare.
I think we should be able to figure out where the money is, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
What I can say is the money from FY09 pretty much closed out to the free cash that was certified FY09. Going into FY10, the town's book did not reflect that you had any carryforward. So theoretically, at the end of FY10, your book said that you were returning $278,000. But my book, the town's book, did not reflect that because it was from the prior year. So in essence, you didn't give the money back in 2010. The money actually came back netting from 2009. That's why it's the links and everything that is so important.
Maybe we can get it to worksheet.
I wish I could say I understood what you just said.
Okay.
As I said, I'm not saying it's wrong.
Yeah.
I just, I'm finding it hard. So I think... It has been fixed, though, because, I mean, those links have been as of when.
And I spoke with Anna the other day.
Right. But it's, it's the, between the town and the company, VEDAR is the one that puts the links in, correct?
The prior town accountant, from what I understand, had helped with the links.
I'm talking about now.
Now the links, the links are good, and that's part of the auditing process.
So, I don't know if...
But they might need a microphone.
No, no. I was going to say, so if the free cash came in FY09, I'm sorry, if the school returned $278,000 FY09?
Correct.
June 30th, 2010, at the end of the fiscal year, that's how much was left in our VEDAR accounts.
But at the end of fiscal, no. Or was it the end of fiscal 10?
Yeah, fiscal 10.
For fiscal 10, but because there was no links, what actually occurred in real life, it's kind of confusing to understand it, is that the town book showed that you didn't carry anything forward. So therefore, on your book, you had, let's say $300,000, just for simple sakes. You have $300,000 over here. My book didn't show that $300,000.
So it's still over there?
No. They spent the money as the year went about through 2010. So when they...
The carryover from 2009.
Exactly.
What it sounds like what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just, this is really the first time I'm following it, is that because at the end of 2009, we had a carryover number.
Yes.
We created another account, which was a carryover from 2009...
Right.
That we spent on, and I don't know the exact number, but let's use 275 for number.
Okay.
And so we spent that money. You weren't aware that we were spending that money, so you also spent that money. So we double-spent the money. So at the end of fiscal 10, when we had 275 left, that went to make up the hole from 2009, from '09.
Exactly.
Which in my mind makes, it is scary, to be honest.
It's very scary. It's very scary.
I mean, I just, you know, I mean, we knew how much we had left.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we had memos. I know you were just on, you just kind of came on, and it was the transition between the two, and maybe you got lost in the transition. But the fact that, I just hope now, like you say, it's fixed, so whatever is spent you're aware of, and, you know, that isn't a problem anymore.
Well, for edification, there was no such memo, and I did speak with, with members of your staff when I first came on, and...
Why don't we stay on free cash? I think if we could, to just point...
Yeah, so in other words, we're all, we're all whole at this point is probably the most important point to look at.
I think if I could, Madam McAlton...
Yes, sir.
You know, the solutions that I'm looking at going forward are going forward. What happened in fiscal 2009 in the closing, and schools are very different because you have a little more luxury, Mr. Superintendent, than, they say the Department of Health or something like that.
I completely agree with you that we need to look forward. I wasn't expecting the answer I got, either from Barry or Biz. I'll have to think about what it means, but I don't think we need to pursue it anymore at this point.
Sure.
My second question was, there's a member of the Finance Committee, who it is, it doesn't matter, it's not, not the members living at this table, who has speculated looking at your draft, initial draft budget, that because you had $275,000 in as free cash, that that is your estimate for the free cash that you expect to generate in this fiscal year. Is that an accurate statement?
No.
Thank you.
Is that square, I mean, that kind of squares it away. I know you know what I'm saying.
He never thought that the statement he was making was probably accurate, but I wanted to hear you say it.
It's no, and it's as simple as I can say it.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you have an estimate? Not that it matters all that much, but...
Well, you know, it is interesting. I think the same member or other, perhaps, individuals who, I think, just don't understand the free cash matter, if you will, want free cash estimated by the week, which is a total waste of time and energy, and I'm happy to do it. I talked to the treasurer collector, Mr. Foster. I asked him to check with his association.
Don't do it by the week.
Biz has checked with hers, and I've checked with mine. We're going to do it as we've been doing it as the cities and towns. We're going to have to take a pretty good look on how we're closing out. I have on my agenda tomorrow with the directors of all the departments, Jeff and the leadership team members, the closing. We're starting so early because we need to get a snapshot, and it perhaps speaks to the complexities known in the school department, but where do things look like they're going within your departments, because we're tracking certain trends and we want to be able to get into a, so the closing of FY11 is as important, in my opinion, as opening up 12. But the answer that I gave you is no. That it, and...
I like revenue.
It's right on target. It's right on target. And I also think that, you know, the word free sometimes in things, and people put these kind of misnormers or misunderstandings on stuff, the cash is not free. We've had it in the process, either, once again, either budgeted, appropriated, or in some cases, you know, a reimbursement from the state government.
But I need to ask now, there is a number in the budget under revenues that says free cash, 270. What's the source of that, those funds?
Go ahead, Madam McAlton. You don't need to put your hand up.
On the summary report that you get.
I'll go back, in the budget...
Built into the revenue page.
There is a revenue number of $270,000 in free cash, unless we, unless we write it out, we write 275. What is the source of that number?
This is our preliminary budget, and when this was being done, it was estimated that we would be able to take from the current free cash, $275,030 to reserve for future expenditures, being the FY12 budget. And as we know, we're working on the budget right now to make sure that we have our funding appropriate, that all our budgets are intact, and that potentially at this point, based on the information that's here and the things that we have to do at spring town meeting, that number could potentially go away where we aren't going to have it. Exactly.
It's a good point.
Exactly.
It's the just point, too. It's budgeted. It's not an exact amount.
This is why I would say this is a potential transfer from some free cash balance that I'm considering there, all right? And at one time, I think we thought that we had some $700,000, but then we lined everything up, all right? And we're now seeing that we don't have any free cash carryforward, which puts us in short another $275,000 in balance in the budget.
Your point is well taken. It, once again, is our best budgeted estimate that we have at this time. And as you can see, it's, once again, just an estimate. Can we move on from free cash unless there's any other questions I'd like to get into? I have my report. All set? Jeff? Okay. Barry?
I don't think we've really focused that well on this, as to why we need what we're trying to do. And some people have seen some numbers that I put together, 10 off our reports. Now, I'm going to go over them a little quickly, so maybe we can all sort of say, okay, these are our targets.
Sure.
These is what we have to get, all right? And what I did is I went back to last year's budget and said that we basically have $58,750, is the budget, all right? Of that, $2 million was in revolving funds and $5.5 million was in the mortgage funds. So in those funds, what comes in goes out. They're really not part of that $58 million other than the way they're accounted for. So we have $51 million to spend. And at that time, the town said, fine, we're going to do 24 and a half to our town functions, and we're going to give 26 and a half to our school functions. To me, that's the starting base for this year, all right? And then, but then I go back and I look at the state, and I say, okay, let me take the school side, all right? If I start the school at 26.5, the state said, we're going to give you $137,000. That's off the sheet where it came with the governors.
$137,000?
$137,000.
What is $137,000?
That's the estimate from the, chapter seven, was it?
1.3.
Yep.
You said $137,000?
1.3.
Yes, it's above, that's, I think, what it is above last...
That's the increase.
That's the increase, the increase, the increase is a hundred and thirty seven. All right, on the real estate taxes and excise taxes, the increase, all right, is gonna be eight hundred and thirty five thousand in total, but so we split between the school and the town, it's four hundred and eighteen more come to you. Local receipts, we're looking at a drop of eighty six, half becomes forty three negative to you. All right, and then there's the thirty five, which basically comes about because of the change in the free cash, and we could run some new things. I'm not happy to hear. All right, so basically, we're looking at a total increase of seven ninety two, of which the school, right, should get five hundred and thirty thousand. That's simple, based on those elements. And the same time, the town's losing from the state a hundred and twenty nine thousand, all right? It gets half the real estate, that's four hundred and seventeen thousand, loses half of the other receipts, or forty three thousand, and then we have that other little piece of local, all right, which is seventeen thousand, all right? But they're also hit with the offsets by the governor, seventy two thousand dollars, so they're getting a hundred and ninety thousand dollars more than what we said they could have last year. That's where it basically comes down to. If you take last year's number and you add those increases, all right?
Remember, Carol Winslow is just joining us?
And you see the town with a budget of twenty four nine. Then I went back and I looked at the requests. The school requested twenty eight six, the town requested twenty five seven. Schools are a million and a half over, the town is eight hundred thousand over. Even though we might have done some squeezing here and there to try to do it, that's the reality that we sit today, face it. We've got a problem, we either have to figure out how to cut this, they have to figure out how to cut it, or we have to figure out how to come up with new revenues. And one of the revenues we had hoped for was free cash, it's not there. The other one that we talked about, and I think it was gonna come up, I know it's gonna come with the FinCon tomorrow night, we're gonna bring up the meals tax. But we also seem to realize the other day, when we looked, that we have another million and a half dollars that we need to put out in capital requirements. So really, that money isn't available either to come into this issue. So now we have to figure out what we're gonna do. Can we get any more money from the state? No. Local receipts, there's possibilities, but how much? Can we recover, can we get back to last year's level, and then even if we picked up a hundred thousand, it's not that much in this whole picture. And then, you know, the free cash, we just found out tonight, two seventy five is gone, we have zero. This is, so instead of my plus thirty five, we're gonna have a negative two forty. There's only one other place to go, and none of us are ever gonna wanna say it, it's the O-word, all right? And I'm not proposing it, but I'm saying the problem we face right now is, we're gonna have to cut two point four million out of their two budgets, or find another way to come up with cash for them. Anybody have any idea where we can find cash? And that's the problem, that's the problem of where we are, and that's what I think we have to do. Now, there can be a reallocation. We can decide, well, look, we wanna put more money into schools, so we're gonna have to give up services. And that's a big, big question. Town meeting can decide that, but I think we have an obligation, all right, to examine that and to make, you know, our advisory comments. I know that's where the FinCon will be coming from. That's where we stand, folks, I mean, I think that's what we need to address. It's nice to hear good news, oh, the governor may do this, the governor wants more education money. And so we get to the town meeting night, and none of that's materialized. I'd rather be sitting here saying, okay, look, we've figured out a way to do this, we've figured out a way to come out. It hurts, there's a lot of pain, everyone needs another pain. And as, every dollar we get is gonna go back. It's gonna go back, and we should have a priority list of how it's gonna go back. So much can go back to the school. Maybe the school gets the first priority, or the first twenty five percent, I don't know. Maybe that's not possible because of public safety, and it comes out fifty fifty. But I think that's what we need to bring to the town, is here's where we are, this is a bad budget, and going forward, as we get more funds, here's what we're going to do. If that's in disagreement to you, we'll accept your rearrangement, but understand it's a zero-sum game.
Frank, could we get those, maybe, work papers at some point, if, so the members can look at them, like, I know you've done a ton of work there. I know, it looks very official. It's kind of a, I wanna welcome Member Carol Winslow, who had a family commitment before tonight's meeting, and did say that she'd get here right on time, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for indulging me on that.
Yep, Jeff?
I'm trying to set where I think we can, this is what we need to do, there's some really nasty things in here. Like, you know, nobody wants to say override, but by the same token, I don't think that we can deny anybody the right to vote yes or no on an override. I understand politically, it's a very difficult thing, but I have to say, you know, being a numbers man, and Jeff would appreciate this, of being a numbers man, we're heartless. And we let the boss make the decision, because that's simple, and the boss is the voter in this case. And, I mean, if we can't do that, if we don't want any part of override, then Barry, you have to cut one and a half, Mark, you have to cut eight hundred thousand. And if you don't like those numbers, you gotta go to coffee and decide how you wanna do it, because the people at this table can't decide.
It's good, Frank, I mean, Jeff was first. Thank you, Frank.
I'll accept Frank's numbers until I see them and dispute them, so for the moment, let's agree on Frank's analysis. So I'll just talk conceptually about what you said, Frank, and I appreciate your efforts. I do think the numbers, generally speaking, don't lie. I do think it's going to involve some cutting, and the schools will have to be a major part of that. I do think that it's appropriate to go to town meeting, as long as we go, in my opinion, united, because if we don't go united, then no one can predict what town meeting will do, and that kind of chaos is not good for anybody. So, as I said in the beginning, I think it'd be great if we could get behind the plan. Now, the plan can include, in my mind, a contingent budget. And by that, I mean, you could say contingent upon your approval of a debt exclusion for capital equipment and capital purchases, a, an override for operating expenses, including schools and general government. This is what you will get for the debt exclusion, for the operational override, et cetera. If you choose, in your wisdom, that that's not the right thing to do, and recognizing that the ballot will ultimately choose, it's not just town meeting, then these are the consequences. Then the school budget will look like this, the town budget will look like this, the amount of equipment that we will not buy will be this, and the consequences of all of those things. So I do think it's acceptable for leadership to say, okay, you as the legislative body get to approve all of this, here are two options for you, or maybe multiple options, override, debt exclusion, both, one of the one, or the other, or neither. All of that, I think, is appropriate, and that, I still think, is leadership. Do we have a responsibility to ultimately recommend debt exclusion or no debt exclusion, override or no override? Yeah, I think we do. I personally have a problem with an override for the schools, because even though I am passionate about education and getting the best for them, I think the state ought to be sued for the way they handled chapter seventy, and the way they haven't kept the formula up to date, and therefore have not properly funded schools like we're having. So, but that's just my opinion, okay? But I do think, so I'll stop there by saying, I think we can respond to that in a multiple, in a multiple ways.
Thank you. Brenda?
Well, I was just gonna say, in order for it to affect the FY twelve budget, the selection of the ordinance that we put the question of an override on the ballot, anything to be on the ballot has to be to the clerk's office thirty five days before the election, so that potentially is much first. So if there is anyone that has an appetite to approach the board and ask the board to vote, put the question of the override on the ballot, they would have to do it within the next-
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So as we said last time, the clock is running, and I do appreciate the points Jeff made. Because I do believe that you have to have some, you have to have a level of consensus going into the process, in my opinion. But Carol, did you have?
I actually have an issue with even asking the voters for an operational override, because I think that if we need an operational override this year, what are we gonna go and ask them for next year, and when does it stop?
Right.
I don't necessarily have as much of an issue with debt exclusion for the capital improvements. In fact, I think that may be the way to go, because money's cheap, it's a couple dollars on the tax bill, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really mean anything. But I think the minute you go to the taxpayers and say, we can't operate without more, then that means next year, we say, well, now we need more.
Right, and just so you know, I, believe me, I think Jeff kind of touched it, I do not want for an override. As a matter of fact, I'd like to tell both of you, cut this by one point five, cut this by eight hundred. I don't really care how you do it, because you know what? There are households out there that have one income, that have two before, that can't make the payments, that have cars that are eight and ten and twelve, and, you know, my, my RX cars. People can't afford it. People can't afford a debt exclusion, they can't afford an override, they can't afford their houses. That's why we have such a high turnover of the money that we want. Oh, great, free cash, yeah. We took it off the people's, from people's houses that were foreclosed on, and they couldn't pay their taxes. So, you know, and from my perspective, every time that there's a cut, who gets cut? The new teachers get cut, administration doesn't get cut, the women who work at the windows get cut, because, you know what, then you can show how you can, you can show how tough it is that, you know, we need the money. I'm talking in general, not specifically to you guys, but that's how it always happens. And then, you know, then they cry about, oh, how we just can't eat as much money. Well, you know what? I feel bad that whether it's contracts are being settled at, you know, one percent or two percent, or whatever, but the fact of the matter is, most people out in the private sector, zero percent, zero percent for the past several years, but your insurance costs are going up, 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 so actually, their household incomes are going down. And I don't think, I think we have one heck of an error asking them for any more right now. That's, that's my own personal opinion, but just so you know, I mean, like, if it's debt exclusion, you know, I understand where you go with that, but I just was doing, telling you the override, I was, but Jimmy, our technical expert, it's not good.
Well, and, you know, I'll just say, for the record, that as far as the debt exclusion goes, if you're talking about capital improvements, then the community has, you know, has a vote, you know, yes, we do wanna do capital improvements, or no, and our infrastructure continues to rot and fall apart, but that's the decision that the taxpayer has to make. And I don't have a problem asking the taxpayer to make that decision. But I think that we've gotta get a handle on some of higher salaries. I mean, in my opinion, there should be, if our budget is-
What does that mean?
And I can hear your whole presentation, but if we're in that kind of dire situation, we need to be in across-the-board wage freeze on any non-contractual employee, until we get this figured out.
But I also think that we have, you know, I know that you guys are, a few meetings ago, we had talked about collective bargaining and stuff like that. Well, one thing that's happened is that because there hasn't been any commonality or comparison or whatever with this, you know, we're doing seventy five, twenty five still, for the health insurance, and, you know what? I know that my mother works for a public school system, it's fifty fifty. A lot of places are fifty fifty, but federal government is seventy thirty. And yet, we're not even bringing that up in negotiations. Honestly, I'd rather say, hey, we'll give you four percent this year, five percent this year, so that it is a little bit of boost, but you're gonna bring your, down to sixty forty, or seventy thirty, or something, and we'll re-put that in the next year or so, but whereas there isn't any, that is maybe like, wasn't ever even on the table, it was just that we kept going status quo. And I think that there's a lot of those things that need to, you know, we need to look at, we need to look at the picture totally differently. We just keep looking at, how do we come up with funds, how do we do this? And I think that, you know, on both sides, we have to look at, we have to look at the picture from the other side or something, because it's not looking at it the same way, what is the definition of insanity, very much? So that's, you know, the way I look at it.
Thank you. Vanna?
I just wanna go back to something that Mr. said. We had an opportunity, he was kind enough to show me these at the end of the last meeting, and it really got me thinking about this meeting and what we're trying to accomplish here. So I'm gonna go back to what he said. I think that the background information has been very helpful to me, and I think that it was the right thing to do for the first couple of meetings. But I think, and so going back to what the two of you are saying, we have to really start talking about what we can do, and bringing the ideas, I mean, that's the reason why we pulled this meeting together. And so the recommendation I have is having something like, let's challenge the numbers, but let's start off with something that looks very similar to this. And that that is what we discuss at every single meeting. We pass out the numbers, we take a look at them, we challenge, we ask people, you know, the two of you to go back and challenge this, or challenge that, or what is the new number? And then, next time we come together, we take a look at a new sheet, until we all of a sudden get that number of what we need to cut, either lower, or we come up with different ideas, whatever it is of what we're going to do. But I do think that if we just continue and talk, you know, philosophically, hypothetically, background information, we're just not gonna get anywhere before town meeting. So if we can, you said as the next, really, the next jumping up for the meeting, get that document in front of us, and then let's just start talking, challenge the numbers, and start talking about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might.
Of course.
And I think, you know, I think Mark and I both heard numbers, okay? And it will not be an easy task, it's not an overnight task, when you have multiple associations and seniority lists and ref clauses, as Carol knows. There's bumping to get down to who the people are, what their salaries are, what is the educational cost, and that I have a board, just as you have a board, that you have to go to and discuss preliminary, without putting names out there, but, you know, this is the direction we're going to get to this number, and this is what it means. And then it could change. I mean, people could say, I don't want you to leave that alone, because that's important, you know, look over here instead, and I'm sure Mark could get the same kind of feedback. So we're gonna need some time before I be able to come here and tell you, this is what it's gonna look like in a million and a half dollar cap.
But when I'm saying, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Just the one thing that I wanna say, that before we say, it's one point five, it's eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I think that the work of this committee of what we can do is get to what that number is, and then go back. I don't even think we're there yet. The last thing that I would want is for you to come to me and say, all right, guys, it's one point five, now what do we do? Or the same thing, we could go back to the board's selectmen and do that. I think the work that we need to do for the next couple of meetings is really, let's challenge it, and figure out what that number is, and then go back and talk about, and present back to this group, what does that mean for the schools, what does that mean for the town? Once we have a number, whatever that number is.
I think if I could just, real quick, because we did talk about this at the last meeting, and I'm prepared, I have a report, and I talked to Barry earlier today, we did challenge ourselves to get this. What are the new bodies in whatever's being proposed? Because the way I look at it is that you have to start with the empty positions first. I don't think that we're gonna be, you know, if we get to a point of eliminating or holding, whatever, the line on other filling of positions. So I think we look at what's being proposed. How can we pair that back and put it into some phased approach? I'll use just one point tonight. I know municipal maintenance is woefully short. You know why? Been out there with them, cutting trees, shoveling, I just wanna use them as, just, I try to, I'm trying to get some extra help there.
Can I stop you?
Sure.
And I think you'll appreciate what I wanna say. I made a commitment to myself, and by extension, to the rest of my board and to Barry, that the last thing I felt I should do to Barry when I was on the committee was to micromanage it. And the last thing I wanna do as a member of this committee is to start saying to you, well, you have too many, you know, municipal maintenance people and not enough police and all that. That is not my role. There's no way I wanna be sitting here saying what your budget should look like in terms of number of people, and where they should be, and where they open positions, et cetera, because you might have an open position that you would actually need to fill, and you might have a position that's filled, that you could do without. That is your game, that is none of my business.
Sure, well-stated.
Okay? And I even feel that way about the schools, although I have a philosophical feel for what I think we need to do, so we don't keep repeating the same, doing the same things and not getting different results, because that's the Sandy Redding was talking about. With, but beyond that-
Sure.
I'm not gonna tell Barry, and certainly, I'm not gonna tell you, how to run the town. So in terms of, in terms of how we spend the next, I do agree on, as Frank has started that process-
Yes.
That finding the problem is critical. But frankly, at that point, and this is just me talking, I would like to challenge the two CEOs at the table to go back and say, okay, do it. And then come back and say, these are the implications. I can do it, but this is the impact of doing it. Having said that, I need to add one more thing. I think it is unfair to people like Alan and Dave and the rest of the capital finance committee, if we don't at least, now I'm expressing my philosophy. I do not, would not vote for and recommend an operational override for a variety of reasons. But I do think we have a responsibility to the citizens, to, as Carol was alluding to, to say, okay, you don't want a debt exclusion, you can't afford it, but there is, as you said at the last meeting, a payment now, payment later aspect of this. So if you don't wanna do it now, and money's cheap, and we may never have this opportunity again, because I don't think anyone would have predicted how cheap money is now. This is what we think we ought to do, even though it'll cost you a little bit now, because it'll cost you a lot more later.
That's right.
And so I'm, just, I'm saying now, to the two members of the board of selection, if you could at least get a sense of the board's selection-
Yep.
-whether the debt exclusion is something they would permit being put-
For capital?
For capital only, right, obviously, for capital only, so that we at least have a sense in this committee what we're working with from that perspective only.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to suggest to you, we talked in that first kind of impromptu meeting that we had, about the possibility of postponing the town meeting vote on the budget-
Yes.
-until June, after the final numbers are in.
Yes.
And I thought about it, and at first I thought it was good.
And I thought about it, and first I thought it was good, and then I thought it was bad, and now I'm kinda back to thinking that, you know, to take a budget to town meeting with this much uncertainty, not, you know, knowing where we're gonna be with numbers, we could very well find ourselves in serious trouble come fall.
Uh, yep. I hear ya.
So, you know, I, I think as we start making decisions about how we're gonna go forward and tackle the problem, I think that's our first decision. What's our deadline? I mean, are we talking, you know, eight weeks, or do we have two and a half months to, to figure it out? Because so much plays into this, if we put a debt exclusion on the ballot and passes, that makes a big difference in what we're talking about.
Right.
If the state, you know, comes up with some extra money for education, that makes a big difference in what we're talking about. So, I, I mean, in my, from my perspective, because the situation's so bad, we really should have the best information and the best numbers to bring forward.
Sure, and just to restate, so that everybody understands, uh, the way I understood it to be, I did talk with the moderator, uh, Smith about this, is that we would open up town meeting, we would then recess the portion of town meeting relative to the bu- budget to sometime the first week of June.
To a time date, please, sir.
Right. And then have that time, I believe, um, we might need to check with council, to, to work on other aspects of understanding what the, we'll know what the senate budget looks like by that point, and the house would have-
In June.
Yes, in June.
Yeah.
So the, the, the house would have completed its work, and there would be a so-called conference committee that we're all familiar with, that would be hammering all the details. So, you know, pick the middle line, and that's pretty much what it's gonna come down to, if there's a big, big difference, which I don't think there will be, between the house and the senate. That, that's what we're talking about. And I, I happen to think it's a, a good move to get us that last look at what's happening. Um, now, other people might have other ideas, I, I mean-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, you have a closer ear to, um, Beacon Hill than I have, but what, I had an update recently, I was reading, that the house and senate were talking about perhaps having some numbers by March, that they were kinda looking at it at the same time, because they understood the municipalities and schools-
Sure.
-needed to set their budgets and, you know, if they have to cut, you know, do pink slips and, and the rest of that, that waiting until, you know, June may be too late for that. I, I have to, I've got a June first-
Fantastic.
And there's always the theory of, okay, you're covering yourself, 'cause we, we know if we're gonna lay off three, we're gonna lay off the fourth because of unemployment insurance.
Right.
So you have to do more, but then when you pull it back, once you give somebody that slip, A, the loyalty is gone, because now you've proved to them that you don't have loyalty for them.
Sure.
I've lived through this a number of times in my, um, history back in Boston, when they laid off seven hundred and ten of us, tenured employees. Um, and people start looking. Some of your better people who have, you know, I've got, um, a masters in French and a masters in Spanish, and I can set my rate and go to Bonsstable or wherever, and now, all of a sudden, you get the money for the position, but you can't find an instructor. So-
Sure.
Once we know, I, and I'm just, I don't know if we have to make that decision now about delaying until June, or can we wait until we get better information that, you know, you might be able to get us?
Well, all of us together, but let me say this, the house has reorganized itself, there's a new chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, representative Brian Dempsey from Havel, and, um-
That was up your way, wasn't it?
Close by. Um, he will play a little role, I'm sure, in this process. And, uh, the senate is doing the same, and you were absolutely correct. I think they know probably, it, you know what? If it's gonna be a certain level of news, get it, get it out to the communities, let them do their work.
Well, I, I also think, just to, to add it to that, aside from that you'll lose people and all of that, and the loyalty to the town, you also get, because my ex- assistant is a teacher, and she went there one week when they instituted two and a half, and got her pink slip for a few years in a row.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, and, uh, but the, um, the ones that you can bring back, there is, there is a, um, a lot of times very hush feeling, not only to-
Oh, I see.
Not only to the leadership-
Yep.
-but to fellow teachers, because why didn't you take a cut? Why didn't you do this, you know?
Sure.
You know, they looked and said, "Oh, you're cutting fifty positions."
You're absolutely correct.
"I'm fifty-one, so you know what, I'll vote for it."
Yep.
You know, and things like that. So there, it, it, it plays a whole psychological thing.
You pit them, you, you pit them against each other.
Right.
And so I, I agree that I think it should be done earlier. I also think that last year wasn't the final number, like the twenty-eighth of the year.
You are correct.
So, you know, we also need some time, I mean, not only on the school side, but on the town side, and I think that every year, I mean, maybe I've just been lucky, but, you know, every year that we go to town meeting, every year is, this is a terrible year, this is, you know, it's not for the worst year, and, you know, and maybe, maybe they have been progressively getting worse or whatever, and I know that we've had a couple of years, but there, every year, we're in this position, and you know what? Um, we, you know, the, the charter review committee had tried to push town meeting up, it failed. It was both for that reason, so-
Sure.
-I think that we do the best we can on the dates we can-
Yep.
-and, um, make the adjustments in October like we have in the past.
Well, uh, why don't we do this? I, I know, um, you know, as much time as they like to give themselves, either in Boston and Washington or wherever, uh, it, it's their time, so we can't, I can't speak for their time, can't make any promises, but we still only have, uh, the right, um, what the right idea about trying to get information out there. Years ago, as we talked about, they had to get us a resolution sometime in late January, early February, so you'd, you'd have the right planning, you, you had no right to the penny exactly what you would be getting back. Um, but, um, let, let's do this, let, let's see, uh, if we can come up with, uh, I know we have a week off, but it's a good working week from where I stand. And by the way, just a footnote on the, on the teacher side of it, we totally avoided what was mentioned earlier.
Absolutely.
We avoided it with, with, uh, ferocity, if that's the right word, uh, to be able to say that we wanted to keep the right teachers or the right people and the right programs. I know, I know Superintendent Rabinevich and entire school committee worked hard at that, as well as the board of selection, last, last year, 'cause that would have been-
Absolutely, and I think we've implied-
No, 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 I'm just saying-
I was just saying that enough community has seen it, yeah.
Nobody's talked about that, that's an interesting concept, right? That's not coming up, uh, in conversation as of late, but would have if, if, if we had-
You know, this is what we're talking about, is part of the cost of what cutting is gonna have to do. I mean, it, it's just, these things happen. So wherever we come up with, whatever number we come up with, and we have to get there, we wanna be as precise as we can-
Right.
...so we don't have to cut something that doesn't have to be precise.
And just bringing this to the circle, I mean, I think going back to, 'cause I, I think that when, when I saw this, and then, um, Chairman, when you were starting to go through, I have to agree with my colleague, I do not wanna get into the data of any details or, or decisions on how to manage. Uh, but I do think it's important, it is important to, you know, just to go back to, let's debate and get to a number and talk at the fifty thousand feet level, ideas, maybe things that we, that's the reason why we have all these people around the table. Everyone has different ideas of how we could get there on both sides.
Sure.
Um, and so, but it's, I, I agree that we have to start off with a number, and then challenge it, and then talk about ideas, and I think that is gonna be a very useful exercise for this group. So if we can, just focus on that and-
Sure, I agree totally. And, um, what would be, I'm just trying to think, uh, we have some information about some of the other issues that we talked about last time, that, uh, business under around, I'm trying to stay to the one-hour mark, if I could, if we could, um-
Yeah.
To break down the room, and there's a couple very important topics on the agenda this evening.
We'll cut to that on Mr. Chairman.
Tonight is also the balloon training.
That is correct.
Was it tonight?
Seven o'clock, balloon training at Wareham Middle School.
Okay.
It is.
Hmm?
It is a bullying training.
Mr. Chairman, we're pressing it up.
Anti-prevention.
Bullying prevention.
Frank?
And if, and if somebody wanted to make that announcement at tonight's meeting, that it's being covered live on the educational channel tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this just shows you, uh, that, that we're not alone in thinking about, uh, what has been proposed. Um, it's, once again, it's for your edification and, uh, and understanding.
That, that is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep, Frank.
My colleague and I on the finance committee were charged with bringing the discussions and information back from this committee to our committee for their deliberation and for them to state their positions, all right? And what we discussed here tonight, I'll come back to them.
Yes.
But I cannot sit here and say that the finance committee's gonna agree to anything.
No, I understand that, I think that's the-
But I think it's important, I will kinda tell you by the next time we come back, by the next time we come back, I'll make sure that we have a position.
That, that'd be great.
They already agreed that we were gonna put the meals in the added hotel tax, so it weren't-
For discussion?
Discussion tomorrow night.
We've negotiated each one of the boards and then, oh.
We say, I think we should have put a placeholder.
Yes.
Oh, you're right.
The placeholder has gone in on that.
But again, like you said, what we discussed tonight, I think has to go back to all the boards, and we, all the boards have to take a position.
Sure, sure, and that's the standard method that we had agreed to upfront.
We agreed to.
Upfront. Yes, you are correct, Frank.
Just to note.
We voted to bring, we, we met, I don't know, the minutes in front of me, but we met to, to bring it back to our respective groups to come up with a resolution.
It's your first meeting, since we discussed that, we just had a meeting on our side.
Resolution? Or some type of resolve or indication?
Yeah, the board has left, we haven't talked about it yet.
No, it was too late to get on the board agenda, but it'll be on for the next meeting.
Well, and I think that, and while I, I do understand, um, the school committees', um, the opinion on that, they don't wanna get involved in the D to J, I do understand that, but I also think that there has to be, and I think that it has to be, without saying, "How you want municipal maintenance person and, and lay up one police officer or something like that," I, I think that there has to be, um, some, um, I don't know, they use it in the federal government about the sled chain or the scalpel, or whatever, you know, I, I think there has to be some of that, because, um, I, as a selectman, I sign off on the expense ones, and without getting into specifics or whatever, I think that there are a lot of perks, if you will, on, in, in, in specific people where they get reimbursed for things, where they get, um, phones, I know that a couple of years ago we had gone through, and we, I think it's only, um, you know, uh, emergency personnel or whatever that we're, we're paying for your phones, and it's part of the job or whatever. And, and I think that that needs to be looked at, um, cars, mileage reimbursement, if, now mileage reimbursement, if you're going to a, a conference, or if you're, um, doing that, but not that just every month we give you this because in your job, you might have to travel from town hall to the maintenance department, that's part of your job, you know? And so I think that there has to be things like that, because if we're, if we're looking at it saying, "Barry, cut one point five, Mark, cut eight hundred thousand or whatever," okay, great, we'll close, we'll close the library, we'll close counseling, you can close, um, Hammond, you know, whatever, because that, that's, you know, how, you're not gonna be able to do it in one full swoop. So I think that those things have to be looked at, and where we have contracts, um, I think, I don't know, it was Kara said, if, but look at those contracts, and where we, if they're, if they're not a collective bargaining, go back and look at these people and say, "Hey, you know, I know in the contract that we said this, that, this thing, but your job might be gone if we can't renegotiate some of these things." It's as simple as that, because I, I think that when you start adding those things up, most things add up to a lot of money. And so it's the no-go and specifics of saying, you know, "Mark, take business loan away from him," or, or whatever, that's not where I go. That's, that's your personal one. But I mean, like, but instead of saying that-
Let's leave it at home anyway.
-if, if they have that, that, you know, it's even those little places, because those things are gonna add up.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I, I wanna make sure that, that, that is, just so I'm understood, I, I think when it comes to policy, contracting, all of that, I mean, we're part of committees that are responsible for reviewing all of that. So to me, that's different than telling Mark or Barry that, you know, you need fourteen teachers to run the math department or if you need, so that, that's the piece that I'm talking about, but overall policy and contracting, yes, I agree that you have to be part of that.
No, I fully agree with that position. I would want even come close to that in town.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, uh, and we haven't said-